To do it.
7 o'clock, I call this meeting of the Goshen Board of Education to order. Mr. Shinkel, you call the roll?
This is Marky.
Here.
Paprocky.
Here.
Mr. Herrera.
Here.
This is Gray.
Here.
Mr. Bintin.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Shall move?
Second.
Mr. Shinkel, you call the roll?
This is Marky.
Yes.
This is Paprocky.
Yes.
Mr. Herrera.
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Bintin.
Yes. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence, remembering the students and faculty members that were in the bad wreck up in Columbus a couple weeks ago. Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Mrs. Walker to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you so much for having me be here today and be able to bring a couple of my fantastic students and student athletes that I have here as well. To start off, I am going to call up Peyton to come on up here with me. Step up here, girl. We get to celebrate you for a few minutes. I'm sure that everybody around here knows who Peyton is, but if for whatever reason you don't and you happen to have driven through our campus after school, weekends, all of the time, she is the really fast young lady running around, making everybody look bad is actually what's happening here. Peyton is an amazing young lady and I think one of the things that makes me most proud is that she is not just an athlete, she is a student athlete that actually does quite well in the classroom and makes it all look like this very simple process. However, we know it's not, right? Peyton is, and again, she's a sophomore this year and she walked in last year and started a run and boy, she hasn't stopped and she has had lots of accolades over the past two years, but recently her sophomore year, I want to read this off to you because it's super impressive. Sophomore, first team all-conference cross-country and was the runner of the year. She holds the current cross-country 5K school record of 1822. Again, she'll make you all look bad, she's fast. She finished third in the Southwest District Championship out of 87 runners. So again, impressive. That third place finish moved her to the regional race where she placed 11th place, against some pretty tough competition out there and it was a good day, a good race for her. Her goal at the end of the last year was she wanted to make it to state and by golly, she did that. Peyton went a couple weekends ago, there were 182 runners there and she placed 66. And again, I need to stress, she's a freshman, she's young, she's got two more year, or sophomore, sorry, sophomore, two more years, I can count. And I have a feeling she's got a pretty good career ahead of her. I know a lot of you know I'm a mom of a cross-country runner, so I say this because I don't think that everybody necessarily knows the work that goes into it. You have to eat right, you have to sleep right, you have to get all of those miles in and take care of your body during all of that too. And again, she is pretty committed to her sport. So I'm going to put you on the spot for a second and I'm going to ask you two questions. First question is, talk about state. How was that experience? Because that's something that not everybody gets to do, but from an athlete perspective, how did that feel? What did you notice? Talk about that.
It was really cool. There was like a lot of competition there and it was, I just really appreciate all my teammates that came up and supported me. I had like all my teammates there still and it just, it was really fun, right? There was a lot of girls.
And so 66 was your place this year and I know that you are a young lady that has goals and likes to create goals. What is your, what are you thinking next year is going to bring you?
I'm hoping that I could get lower 18s, maybe 17s, I'm hoping. Because if I get that, then I could like probably get on the podium. I don't know, try to knock off more time.
Absolutely. And again, the thing about cross-country is the competition changes and your biggest competition is you, right? And keep pushing and doing better every single race. So again, this is Peyton. Peyton is an all-star and I am super excited to see what her career, where it leads her and even after high school, I'm really excited to see the path that's going to come across for you also. So she's amazing. If you've not seen Peyton, I advise you or I suggest that you come on out next year and see her take on the course. So again, this is Peyton Deucles.
I will say Peyton, I joke with you when I see you about you're going to owe us a new path of pavement. Because she is up here every night when you walk out, she's busting. I will say, the time that you had there, you're talking about Division One, right? I mean, that's against some big, big, large schools and you're representing Goshen very well, so we are excited to see you continue junior, senior year and hit those, you know, hit those markers that you got, but you're, she definitely puts in the work, there's no doubt.
I witnessed Peyton playing basketball and then going out and running like 10 miles after a basketball game and I was like, okay, she's on a whole new level. Very impressive.
I gotta switch to my.
Okay.
If you want to drive this, you can.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's okay, it's okay. So I'm not finished bragging about Goshen High School students just yet and as I talked about Peyton as being a student athlete, actually our next young man that I'm going to have come up and stay there for just a second is a student athlete also. So I think it's super neat to be able to see a well-rounded student that is going to represent us here at the school. So as you know, we continue to talk about our portrait of a graduate and it is so important, whether you're a preschooler or a senior at our, within our school system, that there are certain pieces that all of our staff members are working on to be able to best prep kiddos for the future. So what I'm about to talk about takes all of those pieces and really meshes that together for us to start looking about or looking ahead down the road and Pat and I, Mr. Dobbs and I call it the four E's. So something that is probably a Stephanie Walker-ism that I say a lot and you guys have heard this multiple, multiple times, but at high school, the first day of school when a student walks in the door, there is a stopwatch that's going. The pressure of being a leader of a building with having 900 students that are walking in the door with the stopwatch going, of knowing that we have to be able to prep our students to have everything that they need to be successful past high school. There's a lot of pressure in that and we take that very, very seriously here. If I hand a diploma, here's a young man here, this was one of my favorite moments in graduation last year, that he looks like he's not real sure what's going on here, but he was so overcome by the emotion of graduating that it meant so much to him. I owe it to that child. I owe it to 900 other students to have them ready for one of the four E's. So again, as they walk across the stage, I want to know that they've got a diploma in hand, but they've also got a path. And that path is either going to be employment, enrollment, enlistment, or entrepreneurship. And any of those in my mind is an excellent path for a student that has identified that as their direction. And today, I'm going to talk a little bit about employment. We started working with the Home Builders Association and CAP, which is the conduit apprenticeship program, and we have identified three students that are moving up in the ranks in our CAP program. And today, I've asked Brett to come here with me. And today, I've asked Brett to come here with me, I'm going to make you stand up with me, and I've asked Brett to come here and talk with us a little bit about this opportunity that he is a part of. Now, what I want to say about Brett is Brett has been, whether he wants to admit it or not, he's been a special guy to me. He's been a kiddo that is, that has grown in so many ways during the time that you've been in high school. Accurate?
Yeah.
Yeah? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So when you think about school, particularly your freshman sophomore year, tell me, and listen, there is nothing that you're going to say that's going to offend anybody because school feels different for everybody. How was school for you?
Um, I didn't really like school. I would come to school hating it and not wanting to get out of bed to come here. I'd be like, oh, I hate to dread coming to school.
So attendance looked like what?
I was missing like 30, 21 to 30 days. I looked at my attendance, I missed like 30 days freshman year and 21 days sophomore year.
So when you stop and you think as an educator, as a principal of a building, and I look at a kiddo that has potential, I mean, look at him, he's articulate, he's great, he's wonderful, he comes from great people, but something about traditional school wasn't clicking necessarily for him. He's matured a lot and behavior and all of those pieces that have come into play, yeah? We've come a long way. But when this program presented itself, we, Mr. Dubs and our folks that we have been working with called for anybody that might be interested to come down and learn about it. What is this thing about the trades? And we had about, what would you say, 40, 50 kids show up at the very first?
Yeah, 40, 50 kids down there.
Yeah? And.
A little bit, actually probably a little bit more.
Probably more than that.
Yeah.
So at the end of that, we had a sign up and we wanted to be able to see how many of those 40 to 50 kids would stay and take a look at the next steps to be able to learn about trades. And so from the 40 to 50, how many do you think we narrowed that down to?
Uh, like 27, 30, somewhere around there.
Yeah. And what was it about it that you decided that it was worth sticking around and checking that out?
Um, I didn't know where I was going with my future. I still really don't, but I didn't, I just wanted to go to college, to go to college, just I get a degree or something. Oh yeah, I got a degree. I was going to go without any, like, I guess, plan. I was just going to go to college just to go to college and then beat all that debt, not know what I'm going to do.
Yeah. So that's what I was going to say, as a parent in me and I sit and go, I'm going to go to college, to go to college, but I'm not sure what I'm going to do, that's like money, that we start handing it away to somebody else as we try to figure this out. And so Brett decided that he wanted to go ahead and try this and the next steps, we had three sessions, if you would go ahead and hit the first one, the first session was about framing.
Yeah.
So when you think about framing, that first day you showed up out there and there's tools and everything everywhere, what was that experience like?
Um, it reminded me of like helping my grandpa out a lot because I used to help him build stuff, so like just figuring out how much the measurements matter and all that and I was helping the other kids, like and telling them how to use most of the tools and one of the dudes that was there, his name was, it wasn't Jerry, I don't remember his name.
I don't know, his name was Tom.
He was another company dude, like looking out for all the other kids and then he was like, you know, you're actually doing pretty good with this Brett and like I just kept coming back and coming back.
He kept coming back, right? So some grit, stick-to-it-ness, you were coming back, hit that next section for me and then it moved into drywall.
Yeah.
What was your experience with drywall?
I didn't know anything about it and all I knew how to do was mud because me and my grandpa, we actually muddied a wall before, there was a few holes in it and there was a bunch of holes in this drywall, so I was showing all the kids how to mud and do all that and I was like, you just created one.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. So you, again, another skill set that.
Yeah, that I learned from that. I learned how to cut drywall too, I didn't know how to do that. You have to cut exactly with the framing and nail it down, a bunch of different stuff, so.
The next piece that we talked about was wiring, which is the one that kind of.
Oh yeah, I knew nothing about wiring, I was like, I didn't know anything, but now I know how to cut wires, I know where wires go, put them on black on gold, white on silver to get things through. Figured out how to build a light bulb and put a switch in, so that was really, really cool and like kind of some real life stuff that you might need just now, that normal school wouldn't teach you, really.
So regardless, if you decide to go down the path of a trade.
Yeah.
Or if you are eventually married and have a house of your own and so forth and something goes wrong in your house.
I know how to fix it.
You know how to fix it. That's good. I'm making a future spouse really happy, I think is what is happening here.
I want to call an electrician to pay thousands of dollars for it.
Exactly right. Exactly right. So then, then the next step that happened is after those 27 students went through those three separate stations, they had an opportunity, before I jump into this, you actually got to sit down and meet with business owners also.
Yeah.
Talk about that a little bit. So they would, they would work and they would have little sessions and then once when you would do your drywalling, you would go and meet with the team. Talk about, talk about those conversations.
Well, we figured out how they work together and how like some business owners that you go with, they will run the other dude's company, they got each other's back because they do it so much and even like that girl over there, doesn't look like she's doing that much, she's sitting there, but she's doing all the social media, she did the whole video, so like everyone that goes there, it matters when they show up, need to show up every day and everyone matters when you come to work. I'm sure if one of you guys didn't show up to the board meeting, you probably, probably sucked.
Yes, it would. So I guess another, another question that, you talked a little bit about not having a plan and so forth, has this, has this experience helped guide you in any direction?
Yeah, I'm not saying that to a trade now, like before I was like, oh, if you guys are trades, that's, that's nothing to do there, but now I'm like, well, you can make some pretty good money in it, especially with all those dudes, a lot of those dudes went through, they went to college and then did trades, so they got in debt and then went to the trade and made all their money. It shows you that you don't have to go to college to really be successful, you can make a lot of money off of, like all those lights up there, they were like $25,000 and people will pay for it, rich people will pay for anything.
That was exactly the thing. So tell them, tell them, once when Brett and two other students were identified as being like top-notch, these, from the start of the experience to where you are right now, it's a job interview.
Yeah.
Right? And they were sitting and they were watching and Brett's name kept coming out and I think that's what we kept saying, when I would walk up and I'm like, shake their hands and make eye contact and I'd walk away and they'd do that and so forth, it's all a job interview, right? And so this last experience that you went on, you've gone twice, tell them about this home and really what you got to see in that process.
So that's like a $3 million home that they're constructing right now. It's a big penthouse, so like there's an elevator to get to their front door, they have a big lavish door, their hallway, you could fit a, fit a home in and it's crazy. That, their living room, it doesn't, I mean, it looks big, but it's way bigger in person, literally giant, you could like just plop a house in there, it would still be fine. But it just really shows you that people, like especially rich people, they'll pay for anything and that countertop over there was like six grand or something like that just for that one kitchen middle piece and there was like chandeliers that they were paying like $15,000 for, just for a few lights and stuff like that.
But you know, when you're talking about wealthy people and that it doesn't matter what the market or where the market is, if they have a lot of money, they're always looking for somebody to fix their home, but, but when you said they'll pay for anything, go back to those three, those three areas that you were talking about, you had mentioned like when you were using a tape measure.
Yeah.
And you had to be able to get it right, right? Is a wealthy person going to pay for people that are doing work that, that, right?
They want the best of the best.
They want the best of the best. So Brett right now is working to be the best of the best and.
Yeah, learning how to do it. We were learning how to do some laser measuring and stuff there, not just using measuring, but using lasers to measure at that home actually. They were showing us how to do it and the blueprints that you need for it, all that sorts of stuff, so.
Tell them about the, when the glass had come in for the shower, talk about the process that they went through.
It doesn't take that long to install a glass, but like, so I had a luring glass company, I don't know if you saw it at the beginning, but they'll like send the blueprints and if it's not perfect, they'll send it back and sometimes they want it so perfect they're like, the companies that are making the glass don't even want to work with them that much anymore and they're like, we can't physically make it perfect and like they inspect the glass before it goes in, it's like $3,000 per panel, something crazy like that and to install it, here's the, like, two things, but everything needs to be perfect. If it's like one-eighth of a centimeter off or an inch, it messes the whole thing up and I had this in the class.
Now we're on a class.
That cost the company money and the people that are making it money, so.
And if there's something wrong with the glass with this, they have to.
They just throw it in the dump, that's $3,000 gone, yeah.
But it can't be used anywhere else.
Yeah, they just throw it away, just put it in the random dumpster.
So Mr. Bailey, if you would, that link, and I'm going to have you sit for just a second because you don't want to sit, stand for a minute and a half, but if you would click that and put it on one, one minute 38 seconds, kind of zip that along, it's where our three kids are talking a little bit about, about what they experienced.
Here, here, Luring Glass, so today we're, yeah, so in a big shout out to Goshen School and Pat Dubs and Noah and Stephanie Walker, the principal is like, Goshen School is like super interested in its career development, you know, workforce development and career readiness for their students. Bella here. Bella, Bella works in, is a high school senior, Bella? She's a junior and she works on the multimedia team, so this gives her a chance to get out of the school, she's probably good at doing it anyway, and gives her a chance to actually, yeah, get some experience in the marketplace. And so with me, I've got three of the Goshen students and I asked them like, you know, so I've got Brett, Logan and Sam, and I asked them like, what's something that you didn't expect to see that you saw? And Brett, you're to my left, so we're showing you.
So I didn't know any of the people working at the home, not all of them, right? I know that, like, there would be multiple people at the office just for you and not even have to come in and they're like a big deal.
So Brett, Brett, all the students who worked, there were three, actually four different departments at Luring Glass and literally three of those departments really work in the office, only one of those, which you met Mark Mini, works out in the field. What about you, Logan, what'd you think?
The most participated me was first agent and everything, I did around like 16th of an inch would matter, it actually does.
So if you're not familiar with the tape measure, pull it out and look at a sixteenth of an inch and what Logan's, what Logan's talking about is that a sixteenth of an inch matters a lot when your, when your customers are expecting the best of the best. Yeah. Sam, what about you?
I was more surprised about how the pricing on the higher-end products were, uh, 25 light sec for 23,000.
Yeah, yeah, so having, yeah, spending, spending $23,000 just for lights, it is shocking when you see the expense that clients are, but they want the best, they want the best home builder and they want the best material, right? And which means you got to bring in the best team. So when I was telling the students like, we serve the affluent, then they got a, you got a beautiful view of downtown Cincinnati and you saw a beautiful country, so anyway, a lot of, and there's some guys behind me that have still work, so we're going to roll.
And Brett, kind of the last thing that I wanted to ask is, when you were talking with all of the businesses, they talked to you about, about being a good employee and how certain skills start in high school that carry on into the workforce, what are some of those things that, that you can think of off the top of your head? You talked about a couple of those.
Yeah, just showing up, being there for your team, like not missing just because you're a little sick or anything like that, like you got a running nose, still come to work, still show up every single day and whether if you don't want to be there, act like it and, you know, there's things like that.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's such a great thing, attendance matters.
Yeah, and always be working hard, always be doing your best, even on days that you don't want to be there, I was saying, always try your best, do your best, because, you know, it's what you're paid to be there for.
So Brett has been our first, our first round and, and Mr. Dubs and I both are so excited every single week when they, when the members from CAP come into our building, being able to watch kiddos, like we are, we are actively recruiting students that fit the mold within the building, it's like, oh, you don't have something to do right now, come on in here, we're going to learn about the trades today. But it, but it's. On the forefront of this and other districts watching how this is starting to take place and the successes that we have. Last thing, this is Brett's mom here and she is super proud of him, but we had a, an evening where you showed up and we were talking a little bit about the future and you, as a parent, I'm going to put you on the spot, yeah? I make him come, I'm going to put you on the spot. But what are you seeing as a parent or, or what are some things that he's talking about that kind of resonates with you?
So the attendance thing, he gets that, like, I've been at my job for 12 years and I've literally only missed two days of work in 12 years because, yeah, and both times were because my mother was in ICU on a ventilator, so, I mean, yeah, so you have to show up to work, I mean, that's, that's why I install in him is work, that's work then. So I, I'm very proud of him, I mean, he goes to school, he wrestles and he has a job, so he does all three. So and that's, I mean, wrestling itself is a job, school itself is a job and then he also has another job, so I'm very, very proud of him. He makes me very proud and I told him, I said, you know, I didn't go to college, I don't have a college degree, I've just been in my business for a long time, like I work in retail, which, you know, if you've ever had to work in retail, you can understand because people were crazy, but, and I told him, I said, you do what you, what you want to do buddy, I was like, you, you follow your dream, if you want to work in a place, then you go work in a place, you know, get your experience, but don't go to college just because like he said, I don't know what I want to do, why waste the money? If you don't know what you, what you want to go for, now if he wants to go for something, like if he knows 100%, I want to be a therapist, so go to college, get your degree to be a therapist, whatever, but if you don't, then figure out something else you want to do until that time.
So this has been a good experience.
Oh, he loves it, he comes home and he's like, I went to CAP today and I'm like, oh, did you? He was like, yeah, I went on a field trip, I'm like, okay, I went to a house, mom, that we could put our house inside of and I'm like, okay. He was like, that house is bigger than our house and the neighbor's house put together and I was like, alright. And I mean, like, you know, I don't live in a big old house, but I mean, I have a nice, you know, it's a, it's a tri-level house, it's, you know, we got pretty good land and stuff and he's like, no, mom, our house would fit in there. I'm like, okay.
Well, very good and I just, I, I think it's important for you to have a voice in this too because he's your boy and you know what, it's been all the way through, so it's, it's super exciting and I, I just can't stress enough, giving a diploma is not enough, we need to make sure everybody's got a plan. So I'm super proud of you, I know that this is sometimes difficult when I come to you and ask you to stand up in front of a bunch of adults and talk about things, but again, you've, you've been a bit of a special one to me and I couldn't be more proud than you getting up here and standing and talking about your experiences, he's going to do well, he's going to do super well. So do you guys have any?
Which trade, when you were down there, do you think you would like to do?
I like to be an electrician, I think that'd be cool, I'm looking at that now. Like I really liked, when we were doing all that electrical stuff, that piece of drywall, really interested in electrician, there's really good money in it too, my friend's dad's an electrician for Kellogg's and he, he makes like $47 an hour, he makes pretty good money.
So I'm an electrician.
You are?
Yeah, and actually went to college for electrical computer engineering at Ohio University and then I was going to come back, finish up at UC, rest of my work, Ford Motor Company, transmission plant in Sharonville. Ford will pay me, will pay my tuition assistance program. So I started working there and started working short run of machinery and then got, know a lot of the electricians and I'm like, you know, I think I'd rather be an electrician than an electric engineer, because I just like work with my hands, troubleshooting, being there, you know, where the rubber meets the road, so it's.
Yeah.
And so then I, it took me a few years before they offered the apprentice test there where it took you to test. Got in, my first choice was electrician, so now I'm industrial electrician. And I also have a friend that does custom lighting and he's designing those chandeliers and everything.
People are paying Tony.
Great, living, doing lighting, actually, he went to Miami University and started working at this lighting company and that was his passion, lighting. But I was super excited, this opportunity come from, really from Homarama people, right? When we were out there at the groundbreaking and these guys at Luring Glass, I mean, they were tripping all over themselves to partner with Goshen Schools, it was, it was exciting, me especially being tradesman, you know, to see how they, I want to see kids get into trades because we really have a hard time getting good help in trades, you know, so many times kids will want to. So many times kids are wanna, you know, how do you fix anything? Well, look, you know, look it up on YouTube or something. You don't wanna troubleshoot, really get in there and learn it. But now, I feel like, you know, this, we're a blue collar community here for the most part, you know, we're surrounded by, like, colored people over there and over there, but you know, we're the ones that get stuff done, you know? So uh, yeah, let's do it. We're kids in trades happier, I am.
I have a question for you. So do any of your peers like ask you about it or have you shared it?
Yeah, a bunch of them. They get in and they regret not doing it. Like, both of my close friends, I'm really good with Logan, they were like, how'd you do that? How'd you get in there? And they were like, cause they were doing, like, they were studying for the ACT exam, which is, that's good too, but. But um, they're really.
For kinda work, right?
Yeah, and they were like, how'd you get in there? And they were, they were like super interested in it, but it was, it's already, like, everyone's already in. I told, I s-, I told them to ask you, I don't think they did. I asked them if they can come, but yeah, a lot of them were interested in it and, but some of them just didn't even know it was happening. Like, I, I got informed from my coach, Mr. Hill, he told me to go check it out.
Some people don't listen to announcements.
I was in the middle of that. Studying for the ACT when my coach texted me and he was like, you can go check out that CAP thing. And I was like, I'm studying for the ACT. And then he was like, no, just go check out, it's just for today.
Yeah, I'm glad you took that opportunity.
Yes.
And the one last thing is, what I really like is the two highlights today is the work ethic that both of you um showcase today. You know, it's in a different manner, but in a different light, but it's both the same type of thing, right? You're working very hard and learning all kinds of life lessons through sports, um, as well as you and um wrestling, but also just working in the trade scene.
Yeah.
Wanting to come to school every day so that you get this kind of opportunity.
I think last year I missed two days of school, other than it was twenty one and thirty.
It was both times I had the flu, that's the only two days I missed.
Thank you for staying home.
Well, Brett, you also had a collapse long the year before that. Was a part of your reason why.
That is correct. That is correct.
But I'm back into wrestling.
I just, as I look at this, I'm at both of you, and it makes you feel good about what our kids are doing, but when I think about, and I've said this a couple times, our high school staff, Pat, Stephanie, the counselors, creating opportunities inside the day, cause it's not easy when you get into a seven bell schedule, state requirement, you've got the pieces that we have to hit from graduation to, you know, to your credits to ACT, to uh the pathways that we had on. They're doing a lot of good work of making sure that we get businesses in and get kids opportunities to touch it, because if you don't end up wanting to go with the Luring Glass or get into electric or the drywall piece, you've had your hands in it and you've figured that out now, right?
I know what it's like.
So the, the opportunities, the pathways that they're giving kids to see and then as they walk out with that diploma, they have a pretty good idea of some options that are there. So I think that's the best part, you know, from a board side supporting that, cause it's, it's a lot coming at us, you know? World's changing, the needs are changing, our kids' needs are changing and our high school's doing, and district. I mean, we're starting us at kindergarten, talking about careers and, and that, but really what they do when they hit the high school from freshman year to senior year, kids are walking out well-rounded, a lot of opportunities. So I thank the high school, I thank you two for coming out. I do have a little certificate here for each of you, um, and then we'll let you get out of here.
Well, I'm glad you're doing that, cause I didn't take any.
Yes, you're good. Come on up, guys. So it's just a certificate of recognition from the board of coming out and sharing with us tonight. And then we also are giving out G pens now for going above and beyond. Our teachers get this, kids get this, just for going above and beyond. You put it someplace, hopefully you get another one sometime before you're out of school, but thank you guys very much for all you're doing.
Aiden, I know a lot of times we leave our meeting and we'll see you out there just to just help you run.
I ran right after school today.
I knew like running in the rain, I forgot to mention the newspaper, I read that article.
Yeah. I'm impressed how you fit it all in. It takes a lot of time.
I have a study hall.
That's smart.
Yeah, I saved a lot of work from my study hall. Sitting there like, no one talk to me.
That is true. That is true.
On behalf of the board, we, we appreciate you coming, you've done a good job and we were glad to honor you here tonight. If you'd like to stay, that's fine. At this time, if you wanna leave, you, you can't.
It's riveting, but you.
Thanks for coming.
You're proud of yourself. Thanks for sharing your daughter with us.
Congrats, thank you. Thank you, John.
Oh, gosh, yeah, I am.
Thank you.
So much.
Focus on.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thirty nine.
I have a middle school.
Well, I saw Rocky's truck up there earlier. He's out here running a four valve, just Rocky trying to keep up his pace.
Yeah. Probably has to.
He's gotta keep training to keep up on.
So at this time brings us up to number seven, Old Business, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Bailey.
Okay, we're gonna do a quick facilities update here. Um, you know, as we've, you know, come out of our next steps and kind of that timeline for facilities next steps, looking at phase one, um, just a reminder of kind of our next steps here tonight, we have a resolution of intent that you guys are going to talk about. And, you know, we still have a little time in the end, if, if something happens where we don't wanna move forward with this, but we will be filing with the Board of Elections uh for a March nineteenth ballot issue. Um, and I just wanna quickly go back through where we've been. Um, just for a reminder to us, um, that since November of last year, we began the process of looking at how do we tackle this facilities, the need for space in a way that, you know, you know, our, our district and our supporters can support. We went through the Audit Finance Committee, they examined cost factors of projects, we met with Elvar, went through many master planning sessions, came out with about five options out of that. We took those options to our facilities committee. The facilities committee kind of broke that down to one real true phase, one true option that they felt was responsible. You guys have talked about that all the way through at board meetings. Um, and then at our annual retreat in April, uh, you guys looked at that and said, we need to express the need to go with a phased approach, not a twenty twenty-five year plan. Um, and the phased approach that we've settled on at this point through six months of talking about this is simply the academic space. Um, it's fourteen classrooms at the high school, ten at Spalding, ten at the middle school, additions, a multi-use addition of some sorts at the high school. You know, as we had that community, community event the other night, you know, you think about that, esports is where the tables were stored, stored. And we've got people, you know, not enough space for three hundred people to sit comfortably as adults in there. Um, you know, so that piece of it um is definitely.
It's your key, is it?
Um, and then food service upgrades at the high school only, which is just opening up the high school cafeteria to be a little bit more friendly for more students that we're gonna get. Renovated small group space at Mar Cooks, Spalding and GMS, that's really to give us some innovation space in the building desperately needed as we try to provide all these opportunities to kids that are not just four walls, sitting and learning. Uh, and then, you know, the big one that, you know, I know that the facilities committee and through some of our surveying, said that we need to keep in is the site uh traffic and the safety. I will tell you guys real quick on that. Pat and I met with Todd and Troy, we went down and met with Bob Rose on the Appalachian Grant that we had applied for. Unfortunately, we're not in contention for that. It sounds like the money for that Appalachian Grant needs to be shovel ready. And the project, the sidewalk project that was gonna go through town and all of that had too many right of ways and too many different legal things that were gonna have to happen because that Appalachian dollar is leftover ESSR dollars at the state level, so leftover COVID, it has to be encumbered by a certain date. So they really had to be shovel ready projects. Out of that, I think there were good conversations with Choice One Engineer, uh, but there's some matching grant opportunities out there that I think we're gonna work with on the township to begin a sidewalk project, but it's not, you know, looking at this, it's not gonna stop to meet for our site renovations or really go and bite off much, much of that, if any at all. Think it's gonna be more center of town type of thing that you can get that matching grant through, which will be on the township and maybe just a little bit on us, but we're gonna work through that process, but you know, it's like anything, you, you don't get told no unless you go out and try for it, and we did. Uh, you know, I think the applications there, the designs are there for what that project would look like moving forward and we'll just keep chipping away at it. And continue to work with the township on that. So in all, we understand that this is phase one, there's a phase two that is ten to fifteen years from now, depending on growth, that we understand that, you know, the last issue we had was forty-nine million, this, this issue is twenty-six million. You know, and it really, if you look at that, it's classroom space, it's learning space, that's it. So from your decision in August to go with that, or in April to go with that phased approach, we've looked at this every way. We've taken it through, you know, some surveys with the facilities committee in September. You guys have looked at it in August, September and October and all the different things, looking at our enrollment, to looking at the housing developments, and we know they're continuing to go, there's no stall on that right now. So we are at today, which we've, you know, talked about for three months now, that we are at the point where it's time to proceed. Today's the deadline for that March nineteenth ballot issue for you guys to make a decision on that. So with that said, we've talked about this, we've already got the projections back from the county auditor, um, as we did, you know, um, fade part one of this request that you guys voted on in October, that set that ballot language, which it's a twenty-six million dollar project, thirty-five years, four and a half percent on the bonds right now is what kind of they're saying, which comes out to three point nine mils, uh, which is what would be on the ballot. So, um, you know, and again, that's phase one. That, you know, I, I think we've all discussed, we've all looked at this, teachers have looked at it, administrators have looked at it, it's academic classroom space and traffic improvements that will meet the need of our population for, you know, if you look at that enrollment study, probably for the next ten to fifteen years. Just depends on, you know, what the next subdivision is that comes in, but those current ones in, uh, this will meet our need for that, that time, so.
So with that, do I have a motion to approve this resolution to proceed with this bond issue and the tax letter?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Mr. Schinkel, you call the roll?
Mrs. Peprocky?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bintin?
Yes.
Mrs. Marky?
Yes.
That brings us up to public participation, I don't think anybody signed up. So it brings us to eight, B, financial. Do I have a motion to approve one through six?
I'll make the motion.
There's seven, John, you got an old, you got the old agenda for Friday, remember we have that.
One through seven, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion.
Yes. Second.
Mr. Schinkel, you call the roll?
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bintin?
Yes.
Mrs. Marky?
Yes.
Mrs. Peprocky?
Yes.
So eight, C, personnel motions, one through seven. And you'll know that that one resolution is for the hiring of non-certificated individuals for coaches. Do I have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Please.
Mr. Schinkel, you call the roll?
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bintin?
Yes.
Mrs. Marky?
Yes.
Mrs. Peprocky?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Eight, D, miscellaneous, two donations and the policies. Do I have a motion to approve?
Summit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Schinkel, you call the roll?
Mr. Bintin?
Yes.
Mrs. Marky?
Yes.
Mrs. Peprocky?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Brings us up to Board of Education reports. Mrs. Gray, do you have anything?
I do. First thing is, Goshen Education Foundation currently has a gift card raffle open, so encourage um those of you in here and online to consider um purchasing a raffle ticket and you can do that through their Facebook page or website, you can access the link. We did attend the um OSBA conference and uh there were three sessions that I wanted to personally highlight, uh, and I'll be sharing some notes that I took with the rest of the board from those sessions, but um, one is uh using social media to recruit. Teresa also attended that one as well. There were some good takeaways, not only about the use of social, social media to um recruit, but also some things about like um creating a identity and a culture around your identity and selling that across the board. And so um, really, really liked what I took away from that session. Uh, attended another session on the updates on um, uh, and hosting a bond or levy that we're definitely gonna need to talk more about uh with our latest vote, but um, a lot of updates and restrictions in how you can run those. Um, I know most of us are familiar, um, and attended at least one session that had some of that information, but actually Todd was in that session too, right? Um, so a lot of good takeaways of very specific, like don't think we should bring in our lawyer to just discuss and have a good um understanding and picture from a board standpoint and from our administrators' standpoint on um how to navigate that, the new restrictions. And then the last session that I wanted to highlight is, it was another social media, but it was best practices uh for board members and the use of social media, a lot of really great things that come out of that as well. Um, like I've always been currently use my own personal page to highlight our school stuff and things like, no, I attended the play this past weekend, which for this, I think most everybody attended, absolutely wonderful, but I use my own social media to do that, cause I've only ever had my own, but they're really saying we should, you should have two separate and anything school related should go directly through your professional board um social media page and that has to be separate than a campaign page. So all three of those pages should be very separate. So um, took lots of notes on there, cause there was just lots of really great things and I'll be sharing that out to the board. So.
Okay, uh, Mr. Arera? Great Oaks, our uh application's now open. It opened up uh November fourteenth for the, for the kids that are uh interested in going to the Oaks. Get in sooner rather than later, because it filled up last year and ended up, uh, yeah, a lot of kids didn't get in and wanted to, so get those uh applications. Also, uh, the Laurel Oaks campus was awarded uh some of the money that Governor Dwyane promised the Career Tech Schools, Laurel Oaks, it's getting nearly six point eight million dollars, or the programs up there. Um, they are going to expand uh welding and fabrication program that's in high demand, high demand field. They had sixty-three applications this year, their welding program, and there's only twenty-four available spots. So off the top of my head, I can't remember how many spots they're gonna have, I think fifty, I think they'll add additional fifty seats, so they, they get, you know, instead of twenty-four kids, they get seventy-four kids every year. They're also gonna uh start a electric vehicle technician support production program. Honda's opening a big battery plant up there, um, up near there in uh Bay County, which is um up there near where Laurel Oaks is.[1755.04] It's gonna be a billion-dollar investment, twenty-two hundred, two, twenty-two hundred jobs. But all these dealers are gonna need techs also to work on these electric vehicles because it's significantly different. Gas engine, yes. More dangerous, actually. But so they're, they're gonna offer that program. And also, uh, the law enforcement program, they're expanding that, they're operating that at Laurel Oaks now. So there's three programs, and I believe it's, I think it was a total of a hundred and fifty seats, basically, that'll be created happening with that investment in Laurel Oaks.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How do our students, I mean, after hearing Brett and everything, how do our students know about the opportunity? I think a lot of students, you hear, a lot of students know about the more local, like what's available at Live Oaks. But Laurel Oaks is a little bit of a drive, if you're interested in those areas.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they, yeah, if they, you know, do they send catalog?
I mean, they come down, I mean, that's, they talk through our counselors and our counselors offer all those pieces. And we still, I mean, if we want, you know, Live is the easy trip to take.
Right.
But they do offer those trips to Scarlet. We don't go to Diamond, to Scarlet, Laurel, to understand those programs. That really goes through the counselors, uh, working with those kids. And that's that part where Stephanie's talking about. We're trying to get a track and a plan for every kid by sophomore year so that we know. They start taking the grit survey, they start to create that interest piece. And we're really, that's that tracking piece of software so that we know where kids are at, where their interests lie. But the Oaks do communicate through us, come down with opportunities for kids to learn about those programs and go out to them. So it's probably kind of like Brett was saying, Stephanie was saying, sometimes they have to listen. I know that in all of Pat's newsletters, if you read his Where To.
Right.
Even though there's a ton of information in there, the Oaks is always a piece of it. And Stephanie then highlights that in her newsletters too. But it's information overload, which is what we talked about the other night with parents.
Yes.
And why we did the state of schools, so the parents can start to see some of the things going on. Because it's overwhelming as a parent, but they do communicate, Carrie and Kelly here at the high school all the time. It's that where to piece, that's a piece of those conversations. But, you know, it, it's like, and Bill, Bill and I have talked, and, you know, you've got the lottery system at the Oaks and so many seats, it's exciting to hear that they can expand programs up there at Laurel to open up more seats. But a lot of times that, you know, it's trying not to dissuade kids from applying because they don't feel like they're gonna get the program they want. The first track is freshman and sophomore year, making sure they've got everything they need to apply. If they're thinking about that, they've gotta hit the application piece, all their credits, attendance. They've gotta be on the right track there to then hit the Oaks when it comes time to apply.
So you said we're starting to do like that grit stuff their sophomore year, but really they...
They're trying to move it to freshmen, the, the cert, the interest survey and understanding where kids are at. And that's that whole, I think next time Pat and Tim will be able to circle, understand what we're doing from that sixth grade year to seventh, to eighth with all that career interest and as it builds to high school. It's probably not a ton different. I mean, we hope for it to get different, but if you think back when you were in high school, how the Oaks piece happened, eighth grade, we make the trip over, see what opportunity is that they're at.
Right, I went to high school a long time ago.
I did too, but we still made the eighth grade trip to the Oaks, right? And that, those things are still going on, and that's part of the Oaks, opening their doors more and giving kids more opportunities and more knowledge.
So they, I know there's a push to, to get, uh, career tech schools involved with younger grades. So, you know, middle school being the next national, but I mean, but they were, I went to, well, a conference in Columbus, the Oaks during the summer, and they're talking about, you know, K through, yeah, twelve. But I'm getting in real early, much like, you know, Mr. Dobbs stormed their kids. Yeah, so getting exposed, see what, right, see what opportunities are out there. I mean, it's incredible the amount of programs, these catalogs, manufacturing, engineering, technology. It's offered, you know, the Live Oaks, the electrical program is, happens at Scarlet Oaks, you know, and some of them overlap, several or a couple of different camps.
Well, and that's, you know, for the, for the brats of the world, that's what we're trying to do here is provide those hands-on opportunities to go out and see and get those internships or pre-apprenticeships opportunities. That's a lot of the pieces we're building because it's not always, Oaks is not always the answer for every kid because they don't know it yet, right? But then providing those opportunities inside the school day, here at the high school, and working with businesses and the VAC. I'll be excited to share the length of coming out of this that we're a pilot school of, that's gonna give kids opportunities like this to get out, experience. Because I really think that's what the Oaks is about. Some kids go into that thinking, I wanna be an HVAC. If they make it through the end of that program and don't go to be HVAC and they go to college, it happens, right? But it's giving them that opportunity for two years to experience that. So our goal is to give them as many opportunities, if it's not the Oaks, it's here, that we can give them, whether it be in trades or college or, you know, visits to UC Claremont. But from the Oak side, and I'll talk a little bit about that in my report, the Oaks, we're just trying to give them, get as much information on it as we can.
I just think about Brett talking, you know, and Stephanie talking about how like a traditional school setting isn't for everyone, and it really is not. And, um, you know, opening those doors early on for a kid who maybe a traditional school setting isn't for, maybe the difference in missing twenty to thirty days and showing up because they get to work with their hands or learn something they're interested about or...
And I just don't wonder how we could have made his first few years happier for him. I mean, he just, he just kind of was like, yeah, they were, it was, I just didn't like it. And then he just lit up, just changed, just everything about him.
But yeah, I think, yeah, because now they, I mean, we're going things over there. He's the senior this, right, what year?
Junior.
Junior this year. Yeah, I mean, so I know a lot of changes in age.
Yep.
Programs that they're introducing to kids. Had a lot of things with, you know, right?
Her program, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, it's new this year.
Yeah, I mean, that's great.
I'm thinking though, even like, how do we make sure like, even in middle school, right? The kids who may be not engaging academically get, get to take those classes, right? Like they're in the Mrs. De New's class so that they get to go out and see these opportunities. And it's not just for like the Deborah Gray daughter who knows to tell her daughter, I mean, my daughter's not in that class, but like knows to tell her daughter to take that class, right? Like, but those kids out there who...
Well, I think what it is and what you're gonna see with a lot of what we're doing, it's the middle kid. It's not the lower kid that's getting a ton of support, it's not the gifted student. But then, you know, the middle kid that's just is trying to figure out that why and what purpose is. With the delicate balance, still meeting the report card requirements.
Oh, absolutely.
It's just that piece of, you gotta keep on and make sure that we're, you know, that academically we're pushing and finding the right time of the day and give them those opportunities. And some of it may be summer opportunities, some of it may be after-school opportunities. But, you know, I know that the middle school bringing the Oaks program in, the project leading the way, the early introduction of that is one piece of it. But we're trying to, you know, Mrs. Scherzinger and her team and working with principals, try to get every opportunity in. I wish every kid had the opportunity of every class and offering that we have. But that career track, like sixth, seventh and eighth graders are kind of career, they're housed in career clusters from their fifth grade interest inventory. So that at least during that house piece, which is that kind of, what's the name of the middle school? Trod time, they have some opportunities to explore a little bit, some like things. So we're constantly building it. There isn't the, the perfect answer to it.
No, I think we're doing a lot of great things. I'm really just, you know, I always like to think about those kids who like sneaking through the cracks or like don't have that at-home support or like the example set at home that someone gets up and goes to work every day, right? Like, I mean, kudos to Brett's mom over there, right? Gets up and does the same job for, for twelve years straight.
Two years or two days.
Love that, love that example for him, but that's not everybody's example, right? So.
Good question, thank you.
Mrs. Poprocky?
Gosh, I didn't have any major takeaways. I mean, I went to good sessions, but they weren't, you picked better ones than I did. So just one thing on student achievement. So our kids obviously did a great job representing Goshen. Our sixth graders representing, they have what, fifth grade, um, 3D printing program. So that was great. And then one thing I just read about, I thought was interesting, a school, their agricultural class, they made these Adirondack chairs and sold them. I thought, I'd like to buy one. So I didn't know if that would be something ever that our kids would be interested in making. I know that they have the partnership with the sleeping heavily piece, and that's fabulous. But if we ever needed something else, that, I thought sounded like a good idea, the Adirondack chairs. So, yes, that's it.
Okay. Mrs. Marky?
So I did go to the math night at Smolting. That was Ms. Strasba's brainchild, so to speak. That was really wonderful. It was great to go in there and see all the parents interacting with their students and that. And I don't think I saw one parent on their phone the entire time I was there, which was absolutely wonderful. So that was, that was great. And it was also during book fair, which I know boosted some of their sales because I saw some kids coming out with their grandparents even and talking about how they just bought forty dollars worth of stuff. That was fantastic. So, um, one of the, so like Deborah, I went to a couple of programs on social media and things like that at the conference. One of the ones that I went to was about leadership that promotes student achievement. And it was really based on the board governance and that mindset from the govern, from the board itself, where if we are collaborating and really focus on deep learning of the child and the whole child and that, it will start from that bottom up. And it, they recommend doing a, doing like a, like a, what do they call it? Sorry. Oh, self-evaluation of the board. So, um, which I don't know if that has ever happened before, since I'm newer to the board. So I don't know if that has ever happened in the past and that. But I thought that was a really great idea to take, take back here as we're looking to build for the future.
That's good. Okay, so at this time, we'll turn it over to Mr. Bailey for the goals update.
So I'm just gonna, high level, I think I talked to you guys at the beginning of the year, or I know I talked to you guys, I don't think, about our target areas and how we kind of narrowed those down into two pages from our big massive plan of goals and action steps. Just gonna quickly highlight a few things, high-quality instruction and literacy. I'm not gonna read these to you verbatim, but I, both our elementaries are working hard to identify our youngest kids that need additional support, reading intervention. Between Shalee and Ashley's leadership at those two buildings, and then Kelsey and Danielle and what they're doing with our youngest students, I feel really good. And Teresa feels really good about where we're at as far as making sure that, you know, our youngest kids are getting caught up early, they're identified, and they're not struggling readers as they move through. It should pay huge dividends, not just for the kid, I mean, not for scores or whatever, for the kids. But they're getting a ton of support, and a lot of that, you know, is kudos to you guys as a board and, you know, Teresa and her team for investing in the right people to be there working with those kids that are struggling. I, both schools are seeing huge success with the vending machines as an incentive, the book vending machines. If you put a book in their hands, it's just awesome to see that that is now an incentive for their PBIS reward or whatever the case may be. And the kids are wanting to go get books to read. That's telling about what the leadership there at that building, what Teresa through curriculum, getting kids to read. It's just, it's powerful. And then, you know, our ELA teachers continue to work through, looking at their, the way that they're instructing, their coaching styles and getting ready for their second level. Our teachers are just PDing themselves, working within the building to look at the best practices in providing ELA instruction. And then at Mark Cook, same thing with that, you know, catching kids up, making sure that we have identified those students. The numbers are very good right now. As you look at that, we're reporting that there are only eight percent of students who are on a RIMP, which I think last year was ten, right? Ten, we were at ten, below ten.
We were below ten.
So we're still on track with that. Currently have twenty-seven percent of our students receiving tier-two intervention, which is forty minutes a day, five days a week. And then twelve percent of students receiving tier-three. The goal is to be done, you know, as you go through tier-two, tier-three, back to tier-one. And if not, we've identified students that need additional supports moving forward. So in the area of high-quality instruction and literacy at those two buildings and at the middle school, doing great things.
Our fall third grade reading support will come out in a few weeks. So I really am, I'd like to see what those look like, knowing all the support you have in place.
Question?
The reading program at Mark Cook, I understand, is making fast paces.
They are. I will say to do today, Mark Cook two was awarded the bronze level in PBIS two. I thought that's where you were going with that. Went to the convention and got that. But yes, I mean, just the pieces, the letters training and the pieces that's going on, the teachers are buying in. You know, I think that's Teresa's leadership, Shalee's, and then Danielle at that grade level. Working with the teachers, coaching through, because it's a change in instruction. It's a change in the way we approach reading at that age level. And, you know, if you've been teaching reading, reading for twenty years and we switch to the science of reading and, you know, have to learn a little bit of a new way to tackle that, it's a change. So, and our teachers have grabbed it. So kudos to them. I could go on and on about college and career readiness. I think, you know, that was a great example, but, you know, I do encourage people to read the Where To that comes out every Wednesday, Pat and his staff and the guidance counselors at the high school. Even if you just read the titles and what catch your eye, to then jump into that article because there's, there's a lot of information there, but, you know, a lot of it, you know, it's just, it's really powerful when you're thinking about some of these things that we're trying to tackle at the high school level. Lead ACT tutoring, lunchtime visits from businesses, colleges, military guests, putting as many people in front of kids as we can to give them opportunities to hear. Our teachers are receiving professional development. You know, we took that October PD day and PD'd our staff about, you know, preparing our students for the future in collaboration with UC Claremont, with HCSC, with Jerry Bearman from Alluring Glass. Just allowing our teachers to talk to, you know, businesses out in the field and what they're looking for. And then we had our first teachers go down to Christ Hospital as an externship. They went down and spent a day learning about medical field, what, what they can come back. Because what's coming out is our teachers talking to kids and giving them these opportunities. Ideas are the most powerful because if the teacher's talking about them, they're with the kids every day, it starts to build that interest. So we're trying to get our teachers as many opportunities to get out as we can. And then, you know, lastly, I think in there just, you know, they're working hard at the high school as well with navigating financial aid, college applications, and working through that whole other side of education that's not just, you know, the career path, but giving kids every opportunity that we can. Lastly, tech, or technology education. I'm, Mark and his team and our administrators, we've obviously successfully launched the new website, mobile app and communication platform. We're gonna continue to push on that, learn the new facets of it. The new intercom system is in. Mark sent me a text today that he's gonna try out the emergency alert tomorrow with our admin team with the goal that, at our February twenty-sixth PD, what's the date?
Seventeenth.
Sixteenth, seventeenth PD day. We're gonna do a, we're gonna have all staff in the building and run through what that thing looks like kind of as a trial run, as the first half hour of our PD, so that staff can see what this new intercom safety system can do. The rest of that, kind of touched on online, I'm gonna read it for you, have it in front of you. But, you know, Mark and his tech team, and I just, I just got an email from Kelly De New at the middle school. He's got tech integration experts at all four buildings. They're pushing out information to the teachers on new ways to use technology. And I think I learned something from each of the buildings when I was, when they sent it out. Today's was, said it to Teresa real quick, it was using Canva to create a video logo graphic of some sort. And there's directions in there of how to do it and how to get into it. They're just doing, I mean, those integration experts, I mean, another piece of it's on how to use AI. But they're, they're really taking hold of that. So you've got four tech integration experts, one at each building. Mark meets with them, kind of walks them through some of the pieces of it. They go out, explore, and then they're teaching their buildings how to do these things. So it's really cool. And I, you know, I think Mark's doing a great job of leading them through that. And then, you know, obviously the ongoing creation and support of our student achievement reporting and tracking tools. I, I told Bill and I think who else up there, when you were at Capitol Conference, look for that tracking tool for high school graduation credits and understanding all these pieces. We're starting to get some bites. bites on a few of these, but we may end up just having Mark build the one in-house because he's so good at it. It's because he, he patents it to what our teachers need and it's crazy to go out and, you know, pay money when Mark can build. But we gotta find a downtime for him to do that.
The email I sent you.
Yes, it was good. Yeah, yeah, I sent it to Mark and Pat. We're gonna look into it, see what the cost is, because it didn't look like a one stop that we were looking for.
Yes. It's funny, I didn't even talk to them up there at Capital, I don't know.
Your phone called it, I'd sign it to you.
Yeah, yeah. It was that AI.
Yeah. Uh, communication, I guess can look at that, obviously, the new website, the apps gaining traction. Quality profile's been out, fall G news. We're working on what our winter G news will look like and what'll, um, be comprised in that. Weekly newsletter is going out, you know, for me at the district level. State of the Schools night, I think was a huge success for the first go around. I said it that night. I had to thank Mrs. Scherzinger for, um, keeping our thoughts organized, because really that was just a, let's do this. And we just kind of planned it. Our district level leadership team had a huge piece in that. Those teachers on our district letter, district leadership team brought all those other teachers out. That wasn't principals having to walk around fraud. That was teacher leaders, working with other teacher leaders to get them out. Any feedback you guys had? I mean, we wrote down, and I won't share with you our brainstorming session on Friday of how can we make this better next year? Um, but any thoughts that you guys had as you went through that, saw it, uh, good, bad and different? I mean, first go around level, we've got some notes, but anything you guys saw that we should add to that?
Maybe some extra time going through the.
Through the fair.
And everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, you probably could raise the curtain and expand it to auxiliary.
Probably.
It was great though. I mean, it was, it was.
Do you think there, is it too much? Could there be a spring and a fall rendition or you think once a year is enough?
Um, well, I mean, it kind of went on to what we talked about a little bit was, could we pair this with a parent teacher conference, but not sure how we do that at the elementary level, because those are powerful parent teacher conferences at the elementary level. It's just kind of how could we turn a parent teacher night into something like that, maybe? Uh, I don't know if it would be two, um, but, no, it's definitely, that was some of the conversations we had.
I think, uh, Melissa's idea of having something in the spring similar to it would be great for the middle school and high school level since, uh, when they're choosing classes, because like I said, I heard a few, a few kids mentioning, wow, I didn't know they have this. I wish that I, I, you know, I want to try this next year and stuff like that. So, I mean, maybe highlighting some of those in-house programs that we have, um, at a spring, right before they go into their scheduling, then that might be, I mean, it could be a smaller scale.
And I was, and I was kind of thinking, I didn't bring enough of that, um, Oaks thing, if that was, could just be at the eighth grade scheduling night, you know, and maybe if the Oaks could be.
Kind of aligned with.
Eighth grade could come to that too.
Right. It would be neat if like, when you came in the door, there was some kind of like, um, welcome table where like, if I'm a elementary parent, like, these are the tables you should hit up to learn about like, what's happening now and what's your next step.
Ah, love that.
Um, and, you know, definitely like, go explore it all. But like, if I'm a middle school parent, like, go see the middle school tables and these are things you can begin to think about for your future.
We talked about originally having tablecloths, does it like, so red is, I look like Mark Cook or whatever. But all of a sudden, the last couple of days, we had so many more signups. I ran out of tablecloths and it was, so we'll think about that for next year. I love that idea.
I just mean, just like little roadmaps, kind of like if.
Don't miss these tables. If you're middle school, don't miss these tables.
Whether you number them or the colors or whatever, but like, this is K through five focused or whatever it might look like.
Even a, maybe a list of all of the different tables that are there and that. I know people signed up at the last minute, so that's, that's hard to do when you have people.
Next year I'll cut off.
Yeah.
I'll turn off the form. I cannot submit it until after a certain date.
No, it was great. I really, I really, really enjoyed it. Um, and I'm, I'm thinking of like, from a perspective of someone who doesn't kind of know all those things going on, like, if I'm just walking off the streets and I'm a kindergarten parent, I would have walked in there like, wait, where do I start? Right?
Exactly.
It was good that there were some community things too, outside of school, not just.
Yeah.
The raffle, uh, the QR code.
That was really great.
That's Mark's legal.
Oh, yeah.
Are we gonna do this, Mark? I got this.
Yes.
Yeah, and you kind of drew it, draw a better name. I've never seen someone so excited with that.
He already has season tickets.
Is he really?
Yes, he was that excited. That's great.
Good, thank you. I, I do a lot of the family events we're holding too, the trunk or treat breakfast with Buddy, Mark Cook Family Night, Senior Dinner. Um, it's just, I think there's been some powerful things come out of all of those, uh, as far as communication and all our schools are offering. And then lastly, student development. Mental health team continues to plug along. We are tracking attendance and state of Ohio, you know, listen to Brett there. And your attendance, it's up and down right now. Um, you know, the buildings are starting to put some incentives in place, uh, trying to build that up a little bit, but I think it's just that constant message to parents that every day of school is important. Uh, missing a few days here, a few days there is not an option because we fall behind and we lose a lot. Um, so it's just continuing to push that message out there that school's important to our teachers, to our administrators. Um, attendance, I think district level's at like ninety four percent right now. Just kind of depends on the building, kind of it's fluctuating. I think that's where we'd love to hover staying in ninety four to ninety two percent is really pretty good. Um, obviously I'd love it higher, but you gotta be realistic at times too, and sicknesses go through, whatever else, that, that doesn't count. You know, it's accounting everything excused from sicknesses and all of that. So, I do feel like we're, we're chipping away at it. We're gonna continue to, you know, promote it and keep the numbers out in front of people, but, um, it's something, it's not just Goshen. It's everybody working on attendance. The fact that the state has a, an attendance committee and they're pushing out pieces, but you know, the thing I got a kick out of the other day, and I was reading legislation and there is legislation out there to provide students with three mental health days. That completely contradicts trying to attack attendance, um, if you're gonna say, hey, take three mental health days, right? So, that legislation goes through, we'll deal with it moving forward, but, um, you know, that is out there. Um, we do have the new facility dog in. We did get a new child focused mental health uh, at the high school and middle school. She split her time there. That's been a big help there at the high school, middle school to get kids uh, seen that need to be seen and working through, you know, some mental health issues. Shelly Durazio and her team continue to amaze me. She sent me a text the other day. Apparently have a hundred and fifty five families that will receive a Thanksgiving box meal through, um, a lot of community collaboratives, but that's Shelly heading that up with, uh, her and, uh, our resource coordinator through the county.
Who did, uh, the church across the street had, uh, they were full. They had two people in advance that signed up for it.
Yeah.
There were a lot of families that were.
The Methodist church, because there was a traffic backup.
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone had to drive through here then. That was.
Friday.
Crazy, yes.
Two hundred something families. But I know there were a lot of them that they couldn't serve because they, they were maxed out. And they contacted Mr. Azier, which she was able to, to help with, uh, those families that did.
And then currently, if you stop in any of the buildings, there's two hundred and thirty four students who have requested help through our holiday giving trees. So the giving trees are in each, uh, building office. There's some tags there if anybody wants to help out, the two hundred and thirty four families will be helping for Christmas. And then Health Source of Ohio, we met with them a week ago and kind of went through some data. We saw a hundred, or two hundred students in the mobile dental and they're now going back through uh, to treatments, uh, starting next week with students that, you know, need cavities filled, uh, you know, while treatments they've been sent in to. Um, so two hundred students went through the initial cleaning and screening. About a hundred and ten, I think, are coming back for treatment, which means cavity filled or whatever the case may be. Hundred and ninety eight students so far have made student visits to the clinic or anything from quick sick visits, physicals, you name it, but our students and families are using, um, you know, Health Source throughout the day as well.
Our staff too.
Our staff too.
At the State of Schools the other night, I heard one of our staff said that, uh, she took her daughter over during her, uh, her break to the right, she had to take off school.
So nice.
Over on the plate.
Yeah. Good. So, and then I shared this the other night. I just keep pumping it back out there. It's, uh, you know, it's impressive and all those things that we're talking about, you know, that's the, the, in the end, scores and that, you know, make us look good, but I think all the programs and all the pieces we're putting in place for kids is what we should be proud of. And that number one rated teachers in Claremont County is what I'm most proud of. We've got some incredible teachers here doing incredible things with kids. So, that's all from my goals update, target areas update. Real quick, couple reminders, holiday luncheon is Tuesday, December twelfth. You guys have the invites there. We have changed the location. Pay attention to your holiday invite and the change of location. It's no longer at the Board Office. Work with the Weis Baking Company. Did I say it right? Weis Baking Company. Uh, and they're gonna host us there. So it should be the tree, the tree son, Pat Todd, Tom, and Troy. So, um, we'll be there from eleven to one. And then, high school graduation, get this one in your calendar early. If you don't have it, May twenty eighth, seven o'clock at NKU.
Later than usual?
It's usually a week earlier.
Yes, because we were out of school a little later this year with the white Christmas and everything. So, you are correct. I thought you said the time and I was gonna say, I think it's seven. Um, but yes, that is a, a week, a little bit later. Yes, because of where our school calendar falls out. And then, anything other for the greater good?
Didn't want to note, um, you said that the, about financial aid in there. I'm sure the councilor said this, but there's a national delay on FASPA, um, because they're revamping FASPA. And so, the new form will be out until December thirty first. And universities don't expect to get aid packages out because of the new system until somewhere between, like, March and May and really probably more like April, May. It's crazy. So, it's like, gonna be a huge adjustment. But, or, we may want to give our counselors a heads up.
Well, the big thing, I mean, with FASPA, it's just us pushing families to do it, right? And that's making sure they get it filled out so that opportunity should it, should their child choose it, that they went through that process.
Correct.
And understand what's coming to them.
But then.
Making financial decisions and not knowing till May.
Right.
As kids elect, I mean, so, if it's not, I mean, obviously, as they apply to college, have college scholarships, obviously, they're college piece, but you're, as they go through and get their federal.
Support.
Support.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let them with that. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, going back to, uh, Health Source. Two hundred students for the dental. Had all the help they had attendance.
Should, right? Yeah. It should. I just think, you know, I think about kids that, uh, are sitting there suffering with that.
You know, they missed a day or two of school because they got a toothache.
We don't. Long term. So that was parent consent. You gotta remember that.
I understand.
To go through that.
At least you were a kid.
Yeah.
They saw two hundred students.
Yeah. Yep.
We don't have any idea how many kids. Might have been their first.
They said a majority.
I'm gonna say mature, I, yeah, the majority was their first.
I think it was.
You gotta think that's two hundred students that don't have a family dentist or the opportunity.
I think it was close to two hundred, because they did report that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I know last year there, there was high school kids, first time ever.
So with that, uh, so I have a motion to adjourn at eight twenty four.
So move.
A second.
Meeting's adjourned.